All right. Good evening. I'm called to order the October 29th, 2020 business meeting. And I'll turn it over to Gary to please take the role.
Thank you Chair Bernard. Excuse me. First, our staff support tonight Christina Twiliger, Clerk to the Board, Nate Boderman, County Council, Rich Marvin, Public and Government Affairs. A roll call Chair Bernard.
Here.
Commissioner Schrader.
Here.
Commissioner Humberston.
Here.
Commissioner Fisher.
Here.
Commissioner Savis.
Here.
Thank you. And tonight, oh, please join me in a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We are holding this meeting virtually. If you've joined us on Zoom app for this meeting and you're interested in providing public comment, we'll prompt you regarding how to do that when the time is right. You will have the option of providing your comments to us live. Alternatively, anyone can send a comment to be read during the public communication portion of our meeting over email. Just send in your email to bcc@clackamas.us. Be sure to include your name and area, where, uh, where you're from. And I want to start the evening by dedicating tonight's meeting to an employee. This meeting is dedicated to Greg Radanovich, a county employee who passed away on the job earlier this week. Born on October 30th, 1965, Greg received his Bachelor of Science in Forest Engineering from Oregon State in 1992, and was an avid Oregon State Beaver fan. Greg was a member of the County Surveyor Office specializing in public land corners preservation, the backbone of all land use surveying throughout the county. Joined the county surveying team in 1998 as an engineering tech three and advanced to rank of land surveyor in 2016. He was high, he had high standards for himself and challenged himself to be the top performer in his program for the last 10 years. And at this challenge, Greg set a high bar and inspired others to do the same. He was constantly working to increase his knowledge and skills by attending workshops and meetings with other, others. Over his 22 year career at the county, he was responsible for restoring and preserving over 1,000 public land corners. The last three years Greg shared his love of his work by talking, uh, by taking on roles of mentoring for surveyor office summer interns. He greatly enjoyed teaching them about surveying and sharing his love for the outdoors. Very competitive, always looking forward to the county's annual cornhole tournament. One of his claims to fame, he got a hole in one, still trying to do that myself, at a local golf course and was in the newspaper. Our thoughts and prayers go out to Greg's family as they deal with this difficult loss. Greg will be missed. Someone from the office will be reaching out, uh, to inform the family that we, uh, talked about it tonight. So Greg, thank you for all you did. Now, I gotta move my screen so I can read the, we have Gary, what's up?
Yes, first Chair, we have our Clackamas County Clerk Sherry Hall to provide you with an elections update. So Sherry, if you could unmute yourself, please, and show us your, turn your camera on, please.
Oh. Okay. There we go. Okay, so I'm going to start giving you some information and any place you want to kind of stop me and ask a question, feel free to do that. You know, we're really thrilled with the early turnout. At this point, we have 63.9% turnout. At the same time, in 16, we only had 40.7%. Um, that means that today we have 197,020 ballots. At the same time, four years ago, we had 109,298. So that's almost twice as much. Um, we also only have 40% of the number of temps that we would normally have pre-pandemic, but due to space requirements, we have to work with a lot fewer. But things are going smoothly here. We have 68,000 ballots scanned as the end of today, uh, in our tally machines. That's two and a half days of scanning. And we're really ramping up and trying to do 3,000 per day. We only have 10 days to count this election, so we need to get the numbers up. We have six Spanish, excuse me, we have six scanning stations and they're keeping up with the tables that are preparing and opening the ballots for tally. Today was the last day for us to mail ballots out, uh, if anyone called and requested one or came in. And any voter who needs a ballot still, we want you to use the order ahead option on our website. It's on our homepage and it's also on the November 3rd election page. It's called replacement ballot request. And so you would just click on that. And that way we can get the ballot packet ready so that you can just come in and pick it up instead of coming in and ordering it and waiting for it. Today is also the last day for voters to mail ballots back to us. From now on, please put them in a drop box or drive them to the office so that they're sure to be here on time for 8 o'clock on election night. Also, on Saturday, the elections office is open to the public from 10 a.m. to 2 p.m. So you can come in and do any business with voting or your ballot that you would need to do to make sure you vote by November 3rd. I will also go into the Oregon City Recall. Does anybody have any questions about the general election at this point?
I just have a real simple question, Sherry. Do you recall, um, what the highest turnout we've had thus far for a past election?
For presidential? 85%. It was only about 83% four years ago. But you have to remember that because of motor voter and anyone who goes into DMV to do anything with vehicle or driver's license, DMV has to register people. It's the law. Even if someone says, no, I don't want to vote, they have to register that person. And that person probably will be a non-affiliated voter because they don't want to vote and name a party. And so the numbers of ballot or voters are higher and the percentage was about a one and a half percent less last time. And if you compare our percentages too, um, we have way more ballots in the percentages than they did four years ago. So.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome. And so the Oregon City Recall ballots are all coming in, also coming in. We mailed out 26,000 ballots and we already have 8,000 returned, which is 31.6%. And, um, the signatures have been verified and then those ballots are just being held for processing until Monday, November 9th. Because we want to be completely through all the general election ballots before we start the next election. Anyway, as, any questions? No? Because I want to give you guys some praises. We are so, uh, excited, I guess, about all this report, all of the support that we've received from everywhere in the county. You've really stepped up to the plate to support our department in so many ways. Want to thank Dylan Blaylock and Kimberly Dinwiddie Webb with PGA. They're doing all of our media things and corresponding with reporters. And we actually did a virtual press conference this morning for just press people, which there weren't very many there. It took about 15 or 20 minutes. But PGA is just getting all the information out and we really appreciate it. We're actually getting a little bit tired of talking about everything over and over. I also want to thank County Administrator Gary Schmidt, who has redeployed county staff so that we have enough election staff since many of our temps didn't choose to come into work because of the pandemic. Want to thank Jeff Jorgensen, Facilities Director. Have you all noticed the signs that say ballot drop and expect delays? And all the cones over in our area, there's lots of cones, there's lots of blocking off of parking places so that everything will be smooth. And we will have flaggers on site on Monday and Tuesday if they need to direct, to direct the traffic. We've had so many ballots turned in early. We'll see how busy it really is on those two days. And I really want to thank the commissioners for many things. You've always approved all of our purchases in elections. We really have the best equipment ever. And that's why elections go really smoothly. Get lots of compliments on our ballot drop boxes, which you approved two years ago. Anyway, to everybody, we really appreciate you more than you'll ever know. It's really been a smooth election and we expect it to be that way until the very end.
Thank you. Uh, any other questions? I'm afraid to put the hands up because I just got knocked out of this thing a second ago, so. All right. So thank you, Sherry.
Okay, you're welcome. Thank you.
Gary, what's up next?
Next is wildfire update from Nancy Bush, Director of Disaster Management and Incident Commander of our Emergency Operations Center. Please go ahead, Nancy.
All right. Good evening, everyone, and thank you. So just a few numbers that we have here on our wildfire recovery update. So we have moved out of response into recovery. Uh, right now, we still have an estimated properties with wildfire damage at 110. We have six families that are currently in non-congregate sheltering that we're working with. And residents have, that have been damaged or destroyed is 62. Though, we've had 2,166 that has applied for FEMA, FEMA individual assistance. And again, that's also part of the straight wins that we had. Uh, of those 66, um, are eligible for household assistance that they are working with directly. And then our initial damage assessment is still at about around $30 million that we have sent in and that we've taken FEMA on. And, uh, that is part of what we'll be looking at as we move forward into getting some, uh, some of our damages that we've already had and we've already worked on and getting some of the money back from that from FEMA. Not the whole 30 million, it's only a portion of that. Um, we still have an external outreach site that is in, um, yeah, in Estacada, which is at their city hall. FEMA is still there as well as some of our county, uh, people that are there, they're, they're, are there to help too, um, including behavioral health. Um, sometimes we have people there for social services that might be able to help them with some of the the things that they're working on. But also they have, can go there too to still get signed up for any of the FEMA assistance that is available. Uh, we're continuing to work with the Clackamas Community Workforce Partnership on recovery planning and coordination for economic recovery. Tourism is continuing to provide situational awareness for us for the wind and wildfire impacts on businesses and on tourism. And we're still collecting some dollars or some amounts there. Uh, the EPA was actually here in the EOC today and, uh, they are here to, we're here to discuss outreach for the household hazardous waste removal. And so we're looking at those that have signed the right of entry forms, making sure we're in touch with them to let them know, uh, when we may be on their property or EPA may be on their property to do cleanup. But we're also trying to get more to sign the right of entry forms. So it is not too late. If we do have homeowners that have not signed that form, you can still sign that form. And it is online at clackamas.us/wildfire. Um, I also worked with a team that's going to be coming in today to look at erosion and landslide possibilities, especially related to the watersheds. So they'll be looking at culverts and other things, uh, some of the burn scars to see what kind of impact that will have on our watersheds. Um, the city of Malala in particular has some concerns, um, that they'll be working with as well. And we do have at least one team member from Clackamas County that will be going out with that particular group to get eyes on everything that they're looking at. So we'll know exactly what their assessment is saying. And also letting them to know where we have some major concerns in some certain areas of the county. Um, a lot of what they'll be looking at too is going to be federal and state land. And the US Forest Service as well as BLM will also be going out with those teams. So we do have a lot going on. We still have not heard from FEMA yet on, uh, the personal property debris removal. Uh, we're hoping to hear from them very quickly because we know we have a lot of people who are ready to move forward, get things cleaned up. Um, and if they're going, you know, replacing their home, if that's what they choose to do. So we continue to have those questions for FEMA as well as the state moving forward. Um, and it is possible that FEMA will say some counties are involved and some are not. So we just don't know what that's going to look like yet. But we did send a letter forward saying that we are interested in that and working with the state to provide the resources that they have to help us do the cleanup. And that is all I have for Wild and Fire.
Thank you. Any questions? Uh, Ken?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. Um, do you know how many people have not signed up for the cleanup with, right of entry with FEMA?
So of those that have lost their homes, um, it sounds, we're kind to, trying to actually take our data and merge it together to find out for sure. But it looks like there's, could be around 20.
And how do, do we know, do we know who they are?
We do now. Yeah.
So are we going to, are we going to do a personal outreach on the off chance that they have not seen anything? Been able to get contacted in any other way?
Yes. And actually, we've done a personal outreach before. We do have some that have said absolutely no, we're not doing it. So we'll take those off the table. Uh, but we are going to do another outreach. And it will be, we've done some door to door. Um, so we're trying to be very creative in how we reach out because we want to make sure that we get to everyone and they have the opportunity.
Any particular reason why somebody would say, no, they don't want FEMA on the property so it can get cleaned up?
Um, they, the, those that I know have turned it down and says, no, thank you, we will do this ourselves.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Commissioner Savis has his hand up.
Yeah, um, Nancy, uh, I was, uh, had a conversation with the business owner who was near the mill, the fire at the mill, or RSG. And, uh, on his proper neighboring property, the property neighboring the RSG, uh, he lost a couple pieces of equipment, industrial equipment. Um, and I, I asked him if he, um, uh, because they weren't insured apparently. Um, I asked him if he actually applied and I encouraged him to apply. So my question is, it, it's not too late to get FEMA coverage to some degree for, for that?
Yeah, yes, they can still apply for individual assistance.
Yeah, I'm going to point him your way again. Um, and I don't know, I, they'd be foolish not to, I would, I would assume at this point.
Right. I mean, and I don't know what the answer would be of course to that, but you certainly, they can't say yes or no if you don't apply.
Right.
All right. Nobody else? All right, Gary, what's up next?
Next is COVID-19 update. We have Philip Mason Joyner, who is the Clackamas County Public Health Director and Co-Incident Commander of our Emergency Operations Center. Philip, please go ahead.
Thank you, Gary. Good evening Commissioners and Christina, I do have slides tonight. Okay, thanks all so much for the opportunity to be here tonight to write an update on COVID-19. A couple of weeks ago, when I was here, I did promote our flu and COVID test, flu shot and COVID testing events that are occurring across the community. We have completed three of those events so far, but there are still opportunities in November and December and Canby and in Boring. And I really want to encourage the community, uh, everyone to get your flu shot. This is something, uh, with the pandemic happening, really important this year, more than ever, to help your community, to protect others, to help our hospitals, um, from the strain of a, um, significant, trying to prevent a significant flu season and saving hospital beds for COVID-19 patients should that be necessary. Next slide, please. So, can you go back one? It's being sensitive tonight. Okay, thanks. So we've had the three events. We had an event last week at Clackamas High School and Malala High School and then at the Town Center yesterday. Uh, close to 800 flu shots and over 250 COVID tests. So a great response so far from the community. Just for comparison, usually Clackamas County Public Health puts on one or two of these events each flu season. Last year, we had our event at Clackamas Town Center. We only had 121, uh, flu shots that were given compared to close to 300 yesterday. So just really appreciate, um, that folks are engaged and interested in doing, doing this. Um, they're drive-through, they're safe, and we have a lot of partners and, and public health staff that have worked really hard to put these events on. Next slide, please. Uh, this is a new graph. I thought it would be important to share just in terms of the journey that we've been on since we had the first, since, um, well, not, this isn't the first case, but since dating back to March. And it shows you just every week, the number of cases that we have. And you can see where we are as of last week, 204 last week. Um, next week, it will be even more. We've had about 30 cases every day. We had 60 yesterday. We have cases in the 40 today. So we are seeing a significant uptick in cases. Next slide, please. Um, I know that one of the commissioners had a question about outbreaks. These are all the outbreaks that have occurred over the month of October. So an outbreak meaning, uh, two or more cases that are connected to each other. So we can connect two cases that have been in contact with each other. Uh, so for, for daycares, that is among, um, uh, little ones and staff. For schools, yes, we do have some schools that have opened up, some of the private schools has opened up and they do have cases. I will share the school, the school metrics a little bit later. Um, but the biggest driver is workplaces, essential workers, folks working across really all industry, industries, uh, folks working in food service, folk working out in farms, um, and then a lot within the long-term care facility and retirement communities. Next slide, please. Here are the weekly phase two reopening metrics for businesses, which we share every week. We last week met five out of six. This week, we meet four out of the six. Doing fairly well when you compare us to the tri-county overall, as usual, doing better than Multnomah County. But it appears just with these metrics that Washington County had a pretty strong week. The one metric on the far right that we can control as public health staff is the percent of our cases that are followed up with. And I am just so incredibly impressed with the staff that are able to provide that service to the community that we're touching base with cases as soon as we can. However, I am very concerned about the sustainability of this. I'm honestly shocked that we're still at 97% because of the turnover that we've seen within staff, because the cases continue to go up. Each of these cases takes hours and hours of staff time, work, um, to do all the interviews, to contact all of their contacts, um, and to close out these cases and work through these outbreaks. With funding, um, ending with the CARES Act dollars, the end of December and 2021 funding being unknown, a lot of, this is not just a Clackamas County issue, this is a national issue that these temporary staff that we brought in are now looking for, for, uh, long-term opportunities. And they've developed some good skills, um, making them attractive to, to other employment, which is, which is hard when you invest so much, so much time into, um, into, um, developing and training staff that now they're, they've found new opportunities. Next slide, please. The next, the next two slides are the, the current key metrics for school reopening. Um, in order for kindergarten through 12th grade to be back to in-person instruction full-time, it has to be 10 cases for 100,000 people in Clackamas County. We're not close to that. Uh, to be, to allow for kindergarten through 3rd grade has to be a 30 per 100,000. And you can see, um, for the past three weeks, we have not met that metric. The governor is planning a press conference, we heard late today, uh, tomorrow morning. She'll be providing that to provide an update on schools. And, um, we're anticipating, um, some changes, some changes to the school reopening metrics. Next slide Christina. And then the other school metric is around test positivity. So we are wanting that number to be 5% or less. And we are at 5.1% last week. Um, so getting close to that, performing, performing better right now than, um, the state of Oregon overall. Okay, so those are the metrics. And then the next slide, please. Yeah, so I know, um, earlier this week, uh, there was interest in learning a little bit more about our work around wastewater and COVID monitoring. You know, one of the benefits of a pandemic response is that innovation does happen. I think that this is an interesting opportunity. This emerging science, this new tool that we can add to our toolbox where you can have some early detection of, um, COVID-19 in the community by, by sampling and testing wastewater. This isn't meant to replace our existing public health surveillance system, but it's meant to really complement, complement them. And, um, the benefit of this is that you can test the water samples, you can potentially identify folks that might be asymptomatic, get them more rapidly connected to testing, um, perhaps identify cases, um, more quickly. And OHA, the Oregon Health Authority or State Health Department, they've received funding from the CDC to allow weekly testing to occur. In Clackamas County, uh, there are two cities so far that have signed up, the city of Canby and Sandy. Canby has, um, received, my lights just went off, sorry. Uh, let's see, Canby has been submitting samples and each week that they've submitted, um, samples since the beginning of September, they have detected COVID in the wastewater systems. Uh, Sandy has not yet provided samples, but will be coming online soon. And then Clackamas County Public Health are also partnering with our Department of Water and Environmental, um, site, Water and Environmental Services Department West. And, um, we will be doing some additional research and doing the sampling work, um, in another location, most likely, um, in the North Clackamas area. This works really well when it's a residential, uh, facility. Um, it works, you know, one of our hopes was, our thoughts was to do this with long-term care facilities, but because they are doing a lot of testing, um, it's turned out to not be as high priority need, but perhaps a location that's a congregate, um, setting with high-risk populations that doesn't have easy access to testing, that this could be a really great, great tool to help be more responsive to meeting the needs of those communities. And I think, as I said, that this is innovative work. I think we're going to learn a whole lot over the next six months as we move forward. And, um, perhaps this could be part of our toolbox for other infectious diseases in the future, it's not just COVID-19. And with that, that is my update. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Ken?
Yes, Philip, would you send me a copy of, or email me those graphs?
Absolutely.
The progressives graphs, especially the ones starting on, in March?
Yeah, I had a question because, you know, I know that travel is limited this year. But there are people that are going to travel. And for example, um, I found out the state of Massachusetts, if you can get a fast test within 72 hours of when you leave. within 72 hours of when you leave and you're negative, it eases your entrance to the state. I don't, I imagine there are other states doing that too. But the question is, where do you, where do you find a test that they can turn it around that quickly? And this is for people who may be traveling, you know, over holidays, despite the fact there's some risk involved. I was just wondering for the public's sake, if you could mention that, or is there, where do you go?
There are a lot of rapid tests, you know, we, we refer folks in general to their healthcare provider to talk about testing options. I will say that, you know, Oregon hasn't widely embraced that concept of you get a negative test therefore you in a way have a pass and can, you know, move forward with, with other potential precautions. So I was just cautious, be cautious about that and recognize that there's, there's why community spread and, and.
You have a negative within 72 hours, does it mean?
And, and, and you, you know, you get a negative test yesterday, you could be exposed tomorrow. So there are limitations of it. Testing is a tool. It's not a single solution to keep people safe. Yep.
Is, by the way, is there any chance you can get that to me before nine o'clock tomorrow morning?
I believe Christina just sent it to all of the commissioners. So you have that.
Yep.
Super. Thank you very much. I've got a meeting tomorrow, and I know they're going to be asking questions about, about it. And I want to be able to provide them this data. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I just sent it out, so you should receive it shortly. And then Commissioner Savis, and then Commissioner Fisher.
Yeah, I just have a, I have a comment, then I have a question. And the comment is, it's just, again, I read the numbers every day. And the OHA numbers for today is Clackamas County had 62, which is a pretty high number. And Washington County had 107. I think it was probably the, the largest number in the state for, for one county for one day. And yeah, and also the state total had 575 cases. And that's a, that's a pretty big number. If that's not the largest number, it's the second largest number for one day. So the numbers aren't looking good, that the trends are. Apparently is what's happening here is happening across the country. The colder weather is driving people indoors. And I, I think we do have to be very concerned about the holidays. And, and it looks like the school metrics, unless they change, aren't looking too good. So that's a pretty serious matter. I know we've discussed the metrics and I, I still argue that the, that the metrics aren't, and it's not our fault, but the state metrics aren't, aren't very well designed to actually accurately measure what the governor's instituting for any kind of a reopening. But there again, the trending and the numbers aren't even favorable towards that right now. So yeah, I won't say it's moot, but it's, it's just not looking too good. My question is, what was my question? Yeah, I got, I got too, too caught up. Oh, I, never mind, I'm going to pass.
All right. Any other questions?
I know the feeling, Paul. What happens to me too?
Commissioner Fisher has her hand up.
Oh, yeah, Commissioner Fisher.
Hey, thanks, Philip. I really appreciate the update on the wastewater treatment. I'll be interested to see how the science is helping inform our outreach and information sharing. So if you could just keep us updated periodically, that would be great. I am curious about, we, Commissioner Schrader and I had a listening session for supporting children during the pandemic. And I'm, you know, I love the graphics that you show regarding what the metrics are for the different ages of children. But I'm curious if you can go a little bit more in-depth as to what's the science behind those metrics? Why are they different for the different age groups? And as we've seen this week, bowling alleys are allowed to open things. There's been more opening and yet schools are continuing to not be allowed to have in-person instruction, except for, I guess, some private schools and some very limited in-person instruction for some children with special needs. And I just, I feel kind of guilty because I go on Monday, Wednesday, Friday to attend person socially distanced outside exercise class. And I feel bad that kids can't go and do that as part of their education. It seems perfectly safe to me to do that outdoors, even in the cold. It's okay to do that in the cold. And I'm just wondering if you can give a little more in-depth as to, into the difference in, in the kids and, and the metrics. And they may all change tomorrow, I understand, but at least at this moment.
Yeah, well, I think, you know, Oregon's been intentional about having really strong science-based metrics. And I, I, as much as the metrics are challenging, I do compliment them for that. You know, when we compare our metrics to Washington and California, well, California has much stricter school opening metrics that they require. Washington's are a little bit more laxed. I think Oregon kind of looked at that and decided to be somewhere in the middle. There's a lot of complexity. I, I think the biggest concern, you know, we do see in general that younger people have more mild symptoms. The concern is the unknown with the virus and the long-term implications of the virus for life, lifelong health, and then of course, spread to older adults and higher-risk people and really that concern. So this pandemic is a marathon. And like, like you said, we, it'll be interesting tomorrow to see what the changes to the metrics potentially could look like and what that will mean for our county and for our kids to be able to go back to school potentially.
Well, it seems that the effort has been to try to reach the metrics. Let's get to the metrics and then we're going to have in-person instruction. Let's get to the metrics. But while Commissioner Schrader and I were on the listening session, we're hearing about the emotional effects of suicide that have happened amongst youth and other emotional consequences. So at what point do we have the other, does the other public health concern outweigh? I mean, I think it's probably answer my question for me, but outweigh the interest in not, you know, not spreading the virus and changing the way we do things and doing in-person instruction very differently, much smaller groups, that maybe even outside socially distanced small pods. At what point does it outweigh the, the health risk for the emotional stress on children?
Yeah, I don't have the answer to that. I completely understand the concern. I agree. It's a huge concern. I, Dr. President and I meet regularly with the school superintendents. We have been convening the private school administrators. We're talking about that. They are doing a lot of innovative and creative things to support social connections, to support students and families in this, this difficult, challenging environment that we're living in right now. But, but in terms of also the state sets the, the metrics and our role is to, and follow those and do what we can to help protect the health of our, our residents. So that's all I can say.
Commissioner Savis has his hand up.
Yep, I remembered what it was I forgot, and that is, we have learned a lot, obviously, about treating and dealing with. I'm kind of wondering if there's anything new as far as the period of time that where one is exposed to COVID and then actually showing signs of symptoms. What I'm, what I'm hearing, I'm understanding that's a, it was, used to be three weeks was the rule of thumb. And perhaps it maybe it still is, but it sounds like a lot of folks are getting it within a week to 10 days or showing signs after exposure. Is that, is that about right?
Yeah, I would say in general, we're seeing that from the time that someone's exposed to begin to experience symptoms, we're really concerned about two days prior. And then, you know, especially right now with just the fall and cold and flu-like symptoms, you know, people start to experience mild symptoms. It could be three to five days after they've been exposed. And then, you know, once it, once typically, if you're going to have a severe illness requiring hospitalization, it will hit you pretty quickly once you start to experience symptoms.
Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you very much. I know that you mentioned the governor was coming out with some new metrics on schools tomorrow. That is some, somewhat what we've been talking about, the tri-counties, is that specifically we know where the problems are. Can we adjust the metrics and allow certain things to occur? And still have some measure of protection and security that we're not going to just cause the virus to, you know, explode. But it obviously is anyway, so it's, it's a challenge. But, well, it's not fading away. We can see that. So this is going to be a marathon, like you said, Philip. Thank you.
Thank you.
And next up is the consent agenda, and I'll ask the clerk to read the consent agenda.
Share my screen really quick. All right, the consent agenda for today, Health Housing and Human Services, approval of the Public Health Division to apply for the University of Baltimore, combating opioid overdose through community-level intervention initiative, approval of an intra-agency agreement with the Clackamas County Emergency Communications, approval of Amendment Number Five to the Personal Service Agreement with Advantage Nurse Staffing of Oregon for temporary medical staffing in support of the COVID-19 response, approval of cooperation agreement between Clackamas County and Corvallis Neighborhood Housing Services Incorporated, DBA Dev NW for acquisition of vacant land to build 11 tiny ownership homes projects, approval to apply for HB 2017 State Transportation Improvement Fund Discretionary Programs Funds for, from Oregon Department of Transportation for I-205 Borland Road Bridgeport Village Transit Service. For Department of Transportation and Development, approval of an intergovernmental agreement between Clackamas County and the City of Wilsonville to transfer permitting, authority, and maintenance responsibilities for portions of Frog Pond Lane and Stafford Road to the city, board order authorizing construction activities for heirloom apartments, approval of contract with IMG Revel Incorporated to serve as P3 Financial and Transactional Advisor for disaster management, authorization of a disaster management director to sign HUD COVID-19 grant applications and grant agreements, Business and Community Services, approval of Amendment Number Five to Contract with Total Golf Management Services LLC for Management Services for the operation of Stone Creek Golf Club, for Technology Services, approval for a service-level agreement between Clackamas Broadband Exchange and Christ the King for Dark Fiber Connection, County Administration, approval of a contract with WTP America LLC, DBA WT Partnership to serve as a P3 Technical Advisor under North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District, approval of intergovernmental agreement between North Clacks, Clackamas Parks and Recreation District and Clackamas Water Environmental Services, approval of an intergovernmental agreement Amendment Number One between North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District and Metro for Mapping and Data Services. And underwater environment services, approval of an intergovernmental agreement between North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District and Water Environment Services, and approval of an intergovernmental agreement between Water Environmental Services and Clean Water Services for Liquid Bio-Solids Management. And that is your consent agenda.
Thank you very much. Do any commissioners wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve the consent agenda, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Then moved in second to approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion? Christina, please poll us.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Humbirdston?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader? Your mute, or your microphone is off, Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Perfect. And Chair Bernard?
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Next item is Gary.
Public Communication, and Christina will lead them.
All right, thank you. Now is the time for general comment related to any business. If you're, have a comment related to county business, you can use the raise hand feature on Zoom. Or if you're calling in by phone and want to give comment, please hit star nine now. I'll give it people a few seconds to do that. We do not have any emails that came in through the BCC@clackamas.us. And I am not seeing any hands.
All right, well, we'll close the public communication portion of the meeting and go to the county administrator for his updates. Gary?
Thank you, Chair. I like to always share some good news of the programs and people here at Clackamas County to share with you and the public. We'll start with Clackamas Water Environment Services, or WES, receive recognition from the National Association of Clean Water Agencies for its excellence in plant operations and permit compliance. The Association is a leading national authority on clean water issues. The Tri-City Facility in Oregon City and the Hoodland Facility each received a gold standard award. And the Boring Facility and Kellogg Facility each received a silver standard award. These are awards are a testament to our WES staff who work successfully through major construction projects underway at each facility. Next, our staff in Public and Government Affairs, our video production team has added more awards to its already impressive collection. The team recently won five awards from the National Association of Telecommunications Officers and Advisors, or NATOA, for continuing excellence in video programming. NATOA is a national group that supports and serves communication interests and needs of local government. And the awards are regarded as the top honor in government-produced videos. So this year, the team received five awards. They were for programs about libraries, local art, a Water Environment Services campaign, the Veterans Village. So Clackamas County has now received 295 NATOA awards over the last 24 years. Congratulations to our Public and Government Affairs staff. Last week, commissioners, I told you that our Health Housing and Human Services Department received an Office of Justice Grant for the Adult Drug Court Program. We have received a second grant from the Office of Justice Programs. This one is for $900,000. It is for a new program, the Comprehensive Opioid Stimulant and Substance Abuse Site-Based Program. This grant will be a collaboration between Health Housing and Human Services, the District Attorney's Office, the Clackamas County Sheriff's Office, and the nonprofit Central City Concern. This program will create a comprehensive response to substance abuse that connects all of our current efforts. This also includes significant funding for the Law Enforcement Assisted Diversion Program, which provides assistance to homeless individuals rather than sending them to jail. So thank you to our staff for securing this grant and our collaborative efforts to implement it. That is my update for tonight. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Gary. And first up for Commissioner Communication is Paul.
Yeah, um, thank you. Yeah, last week I kind of talked about public involvement. And, you know, in, in some ways, we are seeing, you know, good public involvement. But in a lot of ways, it is falling away. And I don't base that based on just what I see or feel, but it's been really coming from conversations I've been having with people in the community. And we had a, our community leaders meeting, for example, was the CPOs and Hamlets. And we heard, we heard that there's been some falloff there. We had our meeting with the Hamlets presentation of the county. And, you know, some are doing okay and some are seeing that kind of wane. I've been talking to CPO folks around the county. I'm not done with that, but I'll be reached out even more. And also talking to some people that are normally active on some of our ABCs that are just disconnected. And I thought it might be a great idea. I know that our own Mary Rumbaugh got an award for creating that senior loneliness line. And, and we're hearing nationally that, you know, this pandemic has actually really isolated a lot of people. So I think it's really a great opportunity maybe to, you know, whether it's PGA or, or H3S, you know, Mary's office, or maybe a combination of that, we kind of do some possibly training so people can learn how to, how to connect, how to, how to Zoom or whatever that medium is to get them better connected. I thought it'd be something that, there are a lot of people that want to be engaged, but just don't know how to. engaged, but just don't know how to do it. And I, I'd really like to encourage that some way or another. So I'll, I'll be talking to some of our staff about that. And, and I, just to help solve that, especially through the holidays, I don't know how many people are going to be isolated from their families, how many people are not going to be traveling, but it's going to be extremely difficult for a lot of people in the coming, in the coming weeks and months. So that, that's what I really like to at least kind of see, get people engaged and see what we can do to help them overcome that. I hope everyone stays out, stays healthy out there. Very concerning again, just seeing the numbers climb. And very concerned about the vulnerable populations, most especially, and that being our, our senior citizens, those with health issues. That's what I have for today. Last week, I, we, we didn't mention the, the children's supportive service or the Children's Safety Measure 3-564. We encourage you to support that. And hopefully we can get that across the finish line and help our most vulnerable children and getting them the services and the support they need. And with that, I wish everyone a good weekend.
Thank you, Paul. Sonya?
Did it. When I, I know I tell you guys this all the time, when I have the three screens, it's hard to get the mouse where I need it to go. So it's always a little bit of a panic trying to unmute myself. I am so impressed with our staff in Clackamas County, our public health staff, Dr. Present, and all the information that we receive from them on how we are managing through this most challenging time. I was thinking about showing a video that Dr. Present did with our Public Affairs Office, but I'm going to direct people to my Facebook page because I'm going to post it there and not take our time here. And I will just summarize that Dr. Present suggests that people forego trick-or-treating this year and do other kinds of fun Halloween activities, like watch a, watch a movie together or get together and have a costume competition or other types of activities in very small groups that, that you connect with. However, Dr. Present does recognize that children and traditions may inspire people to go out and trick-or-treat. So face covering, constant hand sanitizing, making sure there is distance, making sure that trick-or-treating does not, that you do that with only members from your household and just to really try to be safe for this, this Halloween season. And before this meeting, I was talking with Chair Bernard as we were waiting to sign in. And if we recall last Halloween, Commissioner Schrader came with her witch hat, and we had masks that, that we, of course, Ken wouldn't wear one because he didn't want to mess up his hair. But I was dressed as Wonder Woman and Gary was in, and we had people in costume. We were, it was really fun. And so we are not celebrating that way this year. It's very, very different times. Our, almost our, our current world is really scary. So we're just trying to get there. But look at Chair Bernard now with, he's a pirate. And isn't that fun? And I think Christina can do a little, she was showing some funny little things. We might see her come up with a virtual costume here in a minute. There she is. Now there she's looking really good. So thank you, guys. I'm not as technologically savvy to put a costume online because I guess I haven't updated my Zoom. Oh, what a world. So look at my Facebook for, or our county Quack Cow, Quack Cow, Quack Co YouTube channel for advice on Halloween. Really important for us all to stay safe. And like Commissioner Savas said, yes, please vote. Looks like lots of people are voting. Vote down the ballot to the very, very end of the ballot and vote yes for Clackamas Kids, for the Clackamas Safety Levy for our children. And that's what I have for tonight.
Great. Thank you. And now I've, who's next? Martha? Your mic.
I've been blipping in and out for some reason tonight with this. So hopefully that won't happen when I'm talking about stuff. But I wanted to mention Wes as well because they have a measure on the ballot. It's solely for Oregon City. But it's an important one because it really is helping get the efficiency of that Tri-City sewer plant up to snuff with a new outfall out to the Willamette River. So it, it may not be the sexiest one on the ballot, you know. I know we're all going to be voting for children, but I'm hopeful the folks in Oregon City will help that measure pass as well. And one of the reasons I'm interested is I've had the opportunity to work, be working with a bunch of fellow scientists, even though they're, they've been in the field a lot longer and more diligently than I have on the Clackamas River conference planning. And we're going to be looking at all phases of the Clackamas Basin watershed, from its geography to its, the whole immunology of the river, you know, fish habitat, everything that has to do with the river health and clean water. And to that end, my role on that conference is to come up with some of the current and past public policies that have been successful for clean water on rivers. So I'm going to be setting up a meeting with Wes, with Greg and Shelley and those folks, and hopefully get an overview of what some of the, the recent policies and past policies have been for water health. And I'm also going to check in to see if they want some of our legislators there to talk about what they've been doing in natural resources. It's going to be, I think, really an excellent conference with two tracks. One track is going to be largely for the public, and then we'll have another track that is actually to deal with the scientists, professional scientists who are working in the field. And it's going to be a year-long, a year-long, you know, kind of event. But right now, what we're really working on is getting the speakers lined up for each area that we want to discuss about river health and water health. So that's been pretty cool. And I've really been enjoying it because it's nice to leave some of the public agency jargon to actually go back to some of the science jargon that I used to have in my head a long time ago. So that's been fun. The AOC Executive Committee, we met on Monday. And as many of you know, the turnkey project, a piece of it passed at the emergency board evidently. I didn't watch it. I don't know if Commissioner Fisher, if you had a chance to watch that e-board. It was pretty contentious and very, very emotional evidently. But what happened was the Oregon Community Foundation was granted $35 million to distribute to counties that have been impacted by fire. And we are one of those counties. So I don't know where we are with that yet. I'm hopeful that we can access some of that money. The plan actually was very similar to a program they have in California where they buy motels or other, other entities for non-congregate, you know, basically shelter, because that seems to be the biggest need. And I'm hoping the next few weeks that Gary and, and our housing staff can maybe give us an update on if we're going to access it, how we're going to access it, and what that might mean for sheltering. I know Commissioner Fisher is highly interested in this as well, sheltering across our entire county for people that have been homeless because of, you know, fire issues, but also just in general now with the weather that's going to change soon from sunny and warm to wet, cloudy and cold. So that was good. I also have been involved with the Greater Portland Economic Development District. I'm going to, I'm going to actually thank Tracy Moreland for going to that meeting Wednesday because I had conflicts with NACO. And I had another meeting which eludes me because it's kind of been death by meeting lately. But what they're looking at is now, they are the ones that can get the money from the Department of Commerce for economic development issues. And right now, they're looking at recovery and resiliency under those policy umbrellas about what we're going to do in the next few years in the region to recover economically from the downturn that we've been experiencing with, with businesses. And it's pretty involved. Tracy sent me the packets today, so I'm going to spend the weekend trying to get through those so I can give you a more detailed update in the near future. And yes, I wanted to thank my time with Commissioner Fisher. We had a listening session with, about schools and how we can help our children. And I think Commissioner, you'll agree with me, is pretty heartbreaking in many ways. People are stressed, particularly people that have children with developmental disabilities. They're not in school. They're not getting relief. They're worried about childcare. They're trying to work from home as well as, you know, maintain a job as well as kind of trying to attend to children at the same time. I know my own daughter, and I suspect your children too, Commissioner Fisher, are dealing with the same thing, that it's very difficult. It's very difficult to have a nine-month-old who's an early walker, and you're trying to do, you know, your prosecution casework, and, you know, the other law work that you're doing for your firm, you know, for corporation. I mean, it's, it's really difficult. And my kids are kids that aren't suffering. You know what I mean? They're, they have good jobs. They're there. They can, you know, but there are some people out there, well, many people, that don't have that same level of opportunity that they've been given. And that's really the population we need to be, I think, Commissioner Fisher, you'd agree with me, most worried about with, with the school situation. The last thing I wanted to mention, I think I pretty, oh, I had my flu shot on Friday, and it's, it's painless. I went to Clackamas Town Center and got my shot in the arm. And I think you may see a picture of that from PGA eventually. And lastly, this past Thursday, there was a woman in Leadership and Management Award Luncheon. I was one of the recipients, but I don't really want to talk about me. I want to talk about the other women really quickly. One, of course, is Nancy Bush, who got a Public Service Award, and Bridget Daisy from Clackamas Workforce Partnership, who got an award for one of the small nonprofits. The large corporation was Margaret Karius from Lount International. The small corporation was Patty Gage, and she's Berkshire Hathaway Home Services. Manufacturing was Jenny Perrin from Bob's Red Mill. And the entrepreneur, which is kind of fun, is Portland Cider Company. And I know that they have a location here. And the large nonprofit was Sherry Kooling, who's Providence, Milwaukee Hospital. And the reason, this started in 2016. It was, it was an idea of Shelley Perini and Fred Carlton, or, you know, they were chair and vice chair of the North Clackamas Chamber. And they decided we really need to have a venue where women in leadership and management got some kudos. So for me, it was a real honor. These women are pretty high-powered. I felt kind of outclassed, if you want to know the truth. I really felt like, wow, I mean, they really, they know their stuff. They're smart. They're, they're intelligent. They, they work hard. And I have no doubt that my colleague, Commissioner Fisher, will one day be a recipient of an award as well. So we'll keep that in our heads for the future. And it hopefully won't take you as long as it took me. I think, I think I've just been around a while. I think that's the issue here. But in any case, thank you, everybody, and have a really good weekend and stay safe and well. Okay?
You too.
Okay.
Chair?
Thank you. First, I'd like to say congratulations to Wes and PGA for their awards. Once, once again, organizations, parts of our organization here in Clackamas County do exceptionally well and do exceptionally good work. And we should be very proud of the work that they do. The Fair Board has held a recent quick meeting to cover what they want to do for Christmas. They're being creative once again to figure out ways to use the Fair and Event Center and bring people in and make a few dollars for, for the Fair and Event Center. So there will be a Christmas program this year. But in, in terms of Halloween, following up on Commissioner Fisher's comments, there is a SCARE Fair drive-through at the Fair and Event Center. And it's tonight, tomorrow night, the next night, and Sunday night, or, yeah, 29, 30, 31, and first. And it's a $20 a carload or $11 for an individual. So we'd encourage people to take advantage of that and enjoy Halloween there at the Fair and Event Center. Thank you.
Yeah, they were lined up. They must have started yesterday.
It's been going on for several weekends now.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. There was quite a, quite a lineup the other night. I, when I mentioned earlier today to a group that we'd probably have a really short meeting, they all laughed. Anyway, Martha did get a lifetime achievement award. Well-deserved. Anyway, and, you know, also Ken is on the ballot, and I hope that Ken will make it back to the commission. He's been a great asset, good friend, hardest-working commissioner of us all, right?
I wouldn't go that far. I think everybody does their fair share of work.
But anyway, so don't forget to vote. And I am pretty impressed with the number of voter turnout. You know, in Clackamas County, we invested in a machine where they open the envelope, they put it in the machine, and they run it through, but they don't give the tally until after eight o'clock. And you, remember, my first election, I knew in two minutes that I had won, thank goodness. But anyway, so don't forget to vote and vote early and often. And thank you and happy Halloween. See you next week.
Shades of Mayor Daley in Chicago.